How do they think that they would have the sanitary box? Why would they put their hands down for that? You would let them you let go. And I also we have but only how would that change our huh?
On the on the property? Are the parking come on?
They have to read this. These have to be read off.
Yeah. I don't have
No, no, she can. Yeah, she can read them all.
So just so it's in the let's say this is in the we'll just summarize it. It's in the sound file or whatever.
I don't realize that I come over here and we don't ask any questions.
Anthemism. You just have to read it.
We don't need it. You have to read it. No. That's your job.
You must read it. You must read it.
Does that even read it? No. It's the let me know. I'm just I'm just right here. No, John, I don't want that to be here.
How is coming down? Is she upstairs?
She's upstairs.
So the little piece here is where we are sitting now? No, we need someone.
I really posted all these.
You tell years ago people were small. I did these. I guess they asked her for a couple.
We will start with a public hearing before our regular meeting. And public hearing notice should be read by our new secretary, Carrie. Turn your microphones on.
Notice is hereby given that the town of Shandaken planning board will hold a public hearing pursuant to two seventy-four and or two seventy-six of state law and as prescribed in the district schedule of area and bulk regulation of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following application regarding the site plan review application submitted by McKinley Hollow L L S C for parcel located at two twelve to two twenty McKinley Hollow indicated as S B L twelve dot dash one dash forty. The public hearing will be scheduled for Wednesday, December eleventh, two thousand nineteen, in the Town Hall Building.
There's a sign up sheet up front here. Anyone who wants to speak tonight, please put your name and your address only because we like to know if you're in that area being affected by the project.
That's for me. I'm trying to go to court one of that big ticket. Is it my
No, that's last night.
Last night?
Tuesdays.
Tuesday.
It says December eleventh.
On the tip
Richie. You'll take the money?
Was it supposed to be the tenth? Yeah? Testing eleven?
Just because I'm a federal state trooper, sometimes they don't know what town they're in.
This was in Olive. You're supposed to be in Olive Town Court. Past school on twenty-eighth. Go back towards Kingston. Quite a way back there. And that's the Olive Town Court. Go past Piner Bacon.
Is it Alder?
But Alder. No, it's pasta.
Yeah, pasta.
But it'll come up on
It's a little sign. That's just
Yeah, just from here, you'll have to make a second forty-five. Maybe that's where
Thanks very much. Let's go with our public hearing here. Okay, first of all, will the athletes come up and just give a short little summary spiel for everybody and then we'll go to the questioning.
Should I send you this one? No. So in, I believe in May it was, we had acquired the property up two one two dash two twenty McKinley Hollow Road. It was a former hotel and restaurant. It was probably known to some of you. There was an Indian restaurant in the facility and a hotel. We would like to revive the property and continue that usage and beautify this, this, the location again. We currently have a similar property in Wyndham, so let's just give a little bit of my background. The property in Wyndham that's very similar has nineteen hotel rooms. Three of those are the kind of like standalone hotel rooms as part of this project. And we've had really good and gracious customers, really good guests and guests that really like to be out in the open, out in nature and really enjoy this facility. We do not want to do a events venue. I know Blue Moon or Full Moon is up the road. That's not our intention. It's a different type of customer and we would like to cater to more the families and young travelers that would like to explore the Catskills. The project would be composed of eighteen standalone rooms and twelve more standard hotel rooms, as well as a second building which would house the reception, a small kitchen and a small bar and lounge space.
Okay.
Athletes, thank you.
Yeah.
So anyone with, you can sit down. Anyone with questions, when you come up, just address the planning board.
She could have
Very good. Say your name for everybody.
Don Pollack, two three six McKinley Hollow. I've lived there for ten years. I just want to talk about the context of this project and what my request is. McKinley Hollow Road is a very quiet dead end, one mile per hour road. It ends at this property and then continues as a narrow unpaved road leading to six houses. I'm one of those six houses. In other words, those houses are west of this development. They're not visible from the end of McKinley Hollow Road. Again, it's a private road that we have signed as private and dead end. Now, my concern at this moment is traffic on McKinley Hollow Road. This is a very quiet road. There are very few permanent residents. I would say over half of the houses there are largely unoccupied except on weekends or in the summer. There are no commercial activities on this road. It is a very quiet road with very little traffic, which has allowed people's pets, dogs and cats, to become accustomed to walking around or across that road. Naturally, people are concerned about their pets amongst their concerns. We have had problems with people speeding up and down that road because the road is also at its dead end, a trailhead.
I know that.
It's a trailhead for Balsam Mountain. And Balsam Mountain is on a north-south trail that leads from Bel Air in the north to Big Indian in the south. So this is a major hiking route, largely used in the warmer months and almost entirely used on weekends. So weekends, there is some traffic on that road and a certain amount of that traffic is speeding because people are not, let's say, aware of or cognizant of speed limits out there. Let me get to my point. I would like the town to put a twenty mile per hour speed limit on that road. It's not obvious what the speed limit is on that road. We have unofficially put up twenty mile per hour speed limit signs, which unfortunately have fallen down because of not the right place. But nevertheless, my feeling about this project, I have no problem with this project. I think it will bring a great deal of needed commerce to an area that needs it. This is not a critique of the project. I'm concerned about what is a very quiet, very backcountry road becoming inadvertently with the increased traffic from people who do not live in the country. There will be speeding problems, I would anticipate. I don't want to see any of our, of our animals injured, nor do I want to see any of the residents who walk, jog and otherwise use and have been accustomed to a very untrafficked road of inconvenience. Thank you.
John, did you live there when it was an Indian restaurant?
Don, no, that, that, I've lived there for ten years. That restaurant had been gone previously. I don't know what year it left. The restaurant went to Woodstock. It still exists. It's called the Mountain Gate Indian Restaurant. You may have eaten there. It was a very popular restaurant in its time, but it has gone for the ten years that I've lived there. I want to add that the owner who came in after that restaurant left was not a business person and that resort never had much business in the ten years that I've lived there. And there was really no concern about traffic on that road because once the restaurant was gone, it existed basically only as a hotel and was not either well-maintained, well-advertised or well-regarded. I'll leave it at that. You can check it out on, on the internet if you want to see some of the reactions of people who stayed there. But the point I'm trying to make is that although it existed as a commercial enterprise for the ten years that I've lived there, there was never any real public traffic towards that enterprise. So what we're having, what's going to happen here is really the first major commercial activity on that road in the time that I've lived there. Now, the history of that property is interesting and I, in fact, stayed there in nineteen seventy-nine. It was owned by the Appalachian Mountain Club and it was an active recreational hostel.
Okay, Vincent Santorelli?
Yes. I'm Vincent Santorelli. I live about two two six McKinley Hollow Road. Don's my neighbor, Dave's my neighbor. His property line comes right up, on the first house right off his property. And also Dave's on the other side of his property. Yeah, my concerns are, number one, I agree what, what Don says about, you know, the traffic and everything up there, you know, we're all worried, you know? What he's doing up there is going to be a, a, a big help because there's plenty of times I went on that property and walked over there. I'm closing doors because there's nobody's there, you know, because there's people walking in and out of there. There's a trailer on there, a trailer box, which I closed quite a few times. You know, I went down to the police department, walk up like forty, is that forty-two over there? Next to the door, we park over there. You know, I told them, they sent cars up there. You know, I'm just concerned. I said, it's going to be a, you know, big help, you know, somebody else, you know, doing something with the property. You know, my concerns are like how far like the first unit's going to be like toward my property. You know, am I going to be like overwhelmed with lights, like which is talking over there? The septic's, you know, like I said, my property's right there and supposedly the, the leach field is not too far from me. I just want to make sure it's just not over, overbearing. But he's telling me that, that it's, it's big enough, you know, oversized?
Currently oversized for what the, and then formation, if I may speak.
Yes. Number one, you know, I'm just concerned about where the unit's going to be at, the lighting on my property, the parking, strangers coming up on the road. Like I said, it's a private road. You know, we pay for our own plowing. You know, we don't have the county come and plow our roads. We don't pay for the plowing, we're stuck up there.
It's private pass that.
Yes, yes.
But it's a town road up to that.
Oh, yeah, there's a, it only goes so far on a tarmac, then the rest is, is a dirt road.
So you're concerned that the guests are going to go past that and come up?
Yeah, you know, like people just walking up, like it's all private property up there. I understand like people get lost, you know? We had hikers that got lost. No, I just point them to the direction.
Well, I think they would be walking but not driving.
No, no, but we have some, a couple of times we had people come up there, you know, they don't know where they're going because the trail, from what I understand, I'm, I'm new up there. I'm only there five years. I wasn't there when the restaurant was open. From what I understand, before the storm they had there, that the trail used to be past me, from my neighbors across the street, that's where it was. And some people, they used to come there for years and they come back and they think the trail's still there. You know, so they did move it down the road because the bridge got washed out. You know, like, you know, we have the problems up there with, you know, people going crazy. You know, they're just people that accidentally just walk.
Wander.
Just wander around there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And David, can't read your last name?
Kolberg.
Kolberg?
Yeah. As Denise said, I'm the other, the property on the other side, sort of northeast border of this. And yeah, it sounds like the, the best kind of project we could hope for, for the, for the place. I'm also concerned about all the things, light and noise and so forth. It sounds like they're going to be attentive to that and probably the, their clients will be as well. I appreciate the, the offer of their being flexible about adding, adding plant barriers and so forth, which when the flood came in, I, there were a whole bunch of trees along the road and in front of my house. It was really secluded before that and a lot of that went down. I'm just getting ready to replant myself and so anyway, I'm just hoping it will all work out harmoniously and beautifully and so forth. The, I am downstream, there's a, or stream in the sense those substantial underground water flow. My well's just a few feet below ground level and so I understand the septic, the leach field's going to be quite far away from my place, but what was code forty years ago isn't, I think, code now, so just as long as it's, as it's up to date to current standards, that's, that's all right.
Okay, now, so you have some maps here that show the setbacks from the property line, correct?
Yes. I had also a couple of surveys. So if you could, I can address a couple of that.
If you could put those maps out so they can see them, so I'll lay them out on the table here, where it shows the setbacks, the lighting and where your septic
These are the elevations.
What your septic is in relation to the, to David's well?
So one thing I wanted to speak to about is the septic. So we are currently in works and in communication with D E P, with Chris, Chris Kristellup. He is the head that we have been assigned to from the Catskill Watershed Corporation. And they had asked us to speak directly with him, so we are in the process of planning everything out. Our engineer, Joe Bowick, who couldn't attend today unfortunately, he's been planning out the, the system. He's been kind of calculating what the flow rate needed to be. The original septic system that's in the ground, the leach field, had a capacity of over six thousand gallons, of which we would only require half, so significantly go down in terms of usage. I think that had to do with the, the restroom capacity beforehand. So we, we are not that sizable in terms of that. I think maybe they had plans of expansion when it was the Appalachian, Appalachian Mountain Club.
Which map shows the septic fields in relation to
It has, since we can't, so in here, existing septic drainage field. So it's just worth it here, but I don't have a map that exactly because I
What's the scale of that?
The scale here?
By the, down by the
One thirty-second.
By the
Right there. Oh, this is a hundred feet.
So fifty feet to the inch?
A little bit more.
I can see it.
The, as far as I'm aware, the setback requirements or the distance where a leach field has to be established has not changed from the forty years, but has changed, there's some other requirements around, surrounding the septic system, but the system was designed in a way that it was a hundred feet away from the water course.
You're saying it's wetter now?
Right there.
How far would you say your well is going to, from the property line?
Um
Hundred feet?
What? Yeah, eighty hundred feet.
So it's well over two hundred feet in the front of the well, it looks like?
I just know as a fact that there's underground water flow and above ground, there's sort of a, a spring at the edge of the property or
I know, I know that there's a spring somewhere up in the far, far area here. Our well is
Yeah, so there's a little pond that which is that tiny spring that's just sort of right on the property.
The septic field is on the opposite side of the property. It's over here and the drainage kind of goes
For all who people on the dirt road are
I'm, I'm still on the
Me and him are uphill.
Yeah, you're uphill.
Yeah, so you're pretty safe in that.
Estimate
Go ahead. A lot further than I thought.
I have a question, is that, so does that leaking field serve all the, all the buildings?
It's, it's used to and it's probably going to be designed the same way it was, the, there was a pump chamber near the main building and from there it was pumped up to the leach field in intervals so that it wasn't overbearing the field at once. It would just pump it up.
And the small cabins and the A-frames, they're going to tie into the same septic system? They don't have individual septic's?
No.
And the platform toes up?
Yes.
So we're requiring them to have downcast lighting, so there's not going to be any bright lights, the
My concern is, like I said, my property is like right up against yours and where everything's set up, everything's going to be right there. Now with the lightings itself, sorry, now with the lighting itself, is there a way that like motion detected, you know, like
Can you show us on the map where you are?
I'm right outside his property. Okay, I'm right, yeah, I'm right here, right on your side, right here. Matter of fact, yeah, my well is maybe fifty feet away from the property line, you know, but I'm, I'm going uphill where he's going. Now you said the, the septic's over here. Now this over here, this, this is the first unit, right?
Towards you.
Yes, now how far is that from my
Seventy-five feet. It's the septic requirement that we were
So it's seventy-five feet from the, from the property.
And there's
Yeah, well, I have my, yeah, and I have my, and I have my, my waterfall over here, my shed is over here, so it's a block.
Is there any tree cover between you guys?
Oh, yes, yes.
The only, the only lighting that these units have is a, is a LED strip on the outside. But it's not a, not a bright overhead light, it's not a
Oh, you mean on, on a unit itself, it's there? Oh, it's not going to be regular pole lights?
There will, so these little guys here are going to be just the tafl lighting, but again downhill lights, down, I was not, downlights, just so you can see where
Okay, I understand that.
Like
Now, you also got to have a hotel
This is going to be the hotel. This has above rooms.
Your property here?
Over here, my property and this, I'm only on a half acre.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this, this apartment toes up. I spoke to Solace, he said we said
Exactly.
And now for the same, the same hotel, also possible to be down here also?
None of this is going to be drivable. If somebody ID a client needed to drive to here, that's okay, but this is not supposed to be driven on. It kind of defeats the purpose for the peacefulness and kindness for, for our guests. Nobody's going to park next to it.
That's what we're looking for, peaceful, quiet, it's all, that's why I love the area here. It's very quiet. Now you say you have, I don't know if it's a second year, but you say
My concern is, like I said, my property is like right up against yours and where everything's set up, everything's gonna be right there. Now with the lightings itself, sorry, now with the lighting itself, is there a way that, uh, like motion detected, you know, like.
Can you show us on the map where you are?
I'm right outside his property. Okay, I'm right, yeah, I'm right here, right on your side, right here. In fact, yeah, my well is, uh, maybe fifty feet away from the property line. You know, but I'm, I'm called uphill where he's going. Now you said the, the septic's over here. Now this over here, this, this is the first unit, right?
Towards you.
Yes, now how far is that from my property?
Seventy five feet. It's the septic requirement that we were.
So it's seventy five feet from, from the property.
And there's.
Yeah, well, I have my, yeah, and I have my, my, and I have my, uh, what you call over here, my shed over here, so it's a block.
Is there any tree cover between you guys?
Uh, yes, yes, why?
The only, the only lighting that these units have is a, is a LED strip on the outside. But it's not a, not a bright overhead light, it's not a.
Oh, you mean on, on, uh, unit itself, it's there? Oh, it's not gonna be regular pole lights?
There, there will, so these little guys here, they're gonna be just the taft lighting, but again downhill lights, down, uh, not downlights, uh, just so you can see where they're.
Okay, I understand that.
Short.
Now, you'd also gotta have a hotel room?
This is gonna be the hotel area. This, um, has above rooms.
In your, in your property here?
Uh, over here, my property and this, I'm only on a half acre.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this, this is barbed hose walls. I, I spoke to Phyllis, she said we said eleven. Uh, and now for the same, the same, uh, hotel motor, it was possible to be down here also.
None of this is gonna be drivable. If somebody IDA combined needed to drive to here, that's okay, but this is not supposed to be driven on. It kind of defeats the purpose for, the peacefulness and kindness for, for our guests. Nobody's gonna park next to it.
That's where we're supposed to be, peaceful, quiet, it's all, that's why I love the area. It's very quiet. Now you think you're gonna have, uh, I don't know if it's a second year, but you say you're gonna have a lot of child, uh, e-area, dining area?
This would be hostage, so this, I'll show you. I know this might be a little step further than.
Might, might jump it over here?
Questions answered.
I'll ask you this question if you wanna get back.
This. This, uh, the elevation of this. Essentially, it's, this is the, this would be the view from your side, from here, because the pool is here and it's gonna integrate into the building.
Pool staying with that?
Pool staying with that. And then people would walk in here, there's gonna be a little reception area and then easier to see on here.
You can come up if you want.
So this building here, building eight, would be, um, this, this would be, this is a side view.
Are they gonna be high? Like, this could be all new construction or they keep, you know?
It's gonna be, this is gonna be new construction, but what we would like to do is do this all on modular directions, so it's not. One, it helps quality wise and also reduces noise, so we would like to have all of this constructed indoors and then it's brought to side and assembled. So these are, this is the building eight here, from this side, from this side, it would immediately be this way. People walk in here to the reception area and then it's really just a lounging spot for guests to, to be communal if they want to.
And that's also open to the job public?
Yeah. But it's not gonna be a twenty-four seven restaurant. I tried to explain earlier, it's, right now, similar to what we do in, in our other property, we do a Saturday evening supper where we welcome all guests and they wanted to join in for the bar as well, but it's not a week through, week long business.
Oh, a bar?
A bar that, that would serve liquor and needs a license, liquor license?
Absolutely.
And that's also open to job public still?
If you would like to join us.
But it won't be open during the week?
Oh, not during the week?
Not during the week, most of, most of the week.
So it's most like a week.
Too little, yeah, yeah, similar to the hiking trail, I would say, um, the guests that are coming up are usually more weekenders.
You said they, they can sort of, the, the, there will be enough food so that if they want to, they don't have to.
In order to have, in order to have a bar, you have to have a sufficient meal prepared alongside with it. So if somebody is looking for food, that way it's, that's a regulation for New York State Liquor Authority.
Do you have a liquor license?
We have a liquor license at the.
Not this?
Not here, no, this would be, if anything, then this would have to be required.
But the, I assume the restaurant once had a liquor license?
I would assume so. But it's, um, I don't think that those things are grandfathered, so this is on case to case basis, it's a different, different ownership and different, different properties, so they would establish that based on what, what they see.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we've got these letters from some of the neighbors. We got an email from the Phyllis Walsh. I'm not gonna read everything because we, it would just be going back over everything that was already said here. Her concerns are, she says how many clamping structures, but she means clamping. So you, you told us that.
No, there's a total of twelve regular hotel rooms. Um, I would actually consider the eight down here as well, proper regular hotel rooms, eleven twenty, and then the other, the ones that are set into the early hillside, there would be twelve of those, uh, sorry, ten of those. And each of them is getting with private bathroom, so there's more sharing, it's not more, it's not really a camping facility. It would be self-sufficient per guest.
Yeah, I have, I have one more question. I understand what you know, it's, it's a different style of, uh, camping, uh, now each unit, is it gonna have its own fire pit?
No, so what we're trying to do is really to have a communal feel for everything, so we have one lounge, one pool, one fire pit, one sauna.
Where is the fire pit located?
Undecided, I would be happy to, to take suggestions if you like.
Not near me.
Doesn't have to be.
I'm your buffer, right between you.
And how many people occupy each one as asked by this?
Max name of two guests, two per.
Of course, dogs will be allowed.
We, we try to be pet friendly. We do, we say, well behaved dogs.
Okay, that was her concerns, she pretty much covered. Lenore Ostrowski, ninety-five McKinley Howell Road. She says she has not lived there, she has concerns. Will it host wedding events, you said, no?
We, we, and again, this is for, for consideration, but we are not a, a.
Amplified music, fits the purpose, right? Uh, those were her concerns. She's asking if you're gonna have your parking lots spaces marked, I don't know what that has to do with.
We have to.
Her concerns here, this talks about a blind curve on the road.
There is a blind curve on the road.
So, um.
Is that on McKinley Howell Road?
McKinley Howell, yeah.
The public road.
The public.
We'll put it before the, um, I believe superintendent, uh, your request about twenty mile an hour.
Thank you.
Where's the blinder? Further down or?
It's near the new building, the new house is being built.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's pretty much her. Concerns, so about signage, um, did you decide on that signage?
So there is currently a sign for the former mountain, uh, we're just gonna just re-cover it.
Oh, I wanna add, our mailboxes are right there on the, before the driveway to your property.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
Kind of remain there.
It can remain there, um, would you be opposed to me upgrading and putting it, making them a bit more in line with the property design? An hour, yeah, an hour, that's best.
It's a mailbox.
It's gonna be a mailbox.
Is there any other questions?
Another question, uh, she trash collects it. Is that gonna be out on the road where the, where the garbage goes out now or maybe on your property?
There's a little, there's, there's a little shed with that little pond up front, I think, that we're probably gonna use as a little area. So it's gonna be on property.
Closed, closed in?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's bear activity up there.
Yes, we have that, the same, we have bear cans in, um, in Wyndham.
Are you gonna have any recreational activities on the property? I'm thinking, uh, tennis courts, uh.
No.
Volleyball.
Not to that extent, one thing that I would like to do is, um, a bocce court or a shuffleboard or, but not, not a tennis court. So there's a little recreational area that we had to dedicate it, but it's a bit more like lawn games.
Talking about curling court, like the Fleischmann's, something he wants to put in. All right, any other questions? Anyone else? Better motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move to our late public meeting. Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with learning and justice for all. Amen. Roll call.
Don Brewer.
Present.
Art Christie. John Horn.
Here.
Joanne Allen. Alan Shiner.
Thank you. Robuffo.
Sorry.
It's okay, here. Happens everywhere.
Sure, and, uh, I heard we had minutes from the previous. Sorry, please, just, it's televised, so try to have minutes typed up for the next. Carrie was dumped into the position without any, uh, how long's the previous.
Well, without from everybody here, I'm trying.
You hear the malfunction?
Oh my gosh, yes.
No, you just need that, please.
It goes with the, um, New York State Conservation.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have that on my computer to print out.
The Alsa County Planning Board. This goes with the Alsa County Planning Board report. Okay, old business. Guess we can take a look at, uh, his site plan review that we just had public hearing for. Anybody have any questions concerning it? On the board?
No.
We can either keep the public hearing open or we can have a motion to.
We already closed the hearing.
We can have a motion to accept the project.
I have a motion to accept the, uh, project called, uh, on McKinley Howell Road for the.
Eastwood.
Is Eastwood Project Resort, uh, as it was presented to us.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
It has to be a walk-in.
Just to the, uh, the rule call you did before.
Oh, okay. Don Brewer?
Yes.
John Horn?
Here, yes.
Joanne Cal?
Yes.
Alan Shiner? Cliff?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is any old business, I'm leaving that. We have, uh, new business?
Um, the only thing that was on for tonight was McKinley Howell.
Okay. We only, uh, I think we have projects coming, uh, next month, but.
Before us yet, so.
Uh, you have anything to add? Ed?
I reviewed the, uh, site plan, uh, I didn't find anything to add to that one.
No, it's fine.
Vivian, we've got, uh, your report here, you wanna add anything to that?
Well, I'd like to make a couple of notes on what I think is important from this past meeting.
I'm sorry, Vivian is, uh, representative of the county, uh, planning board, so she gives a report every month.
Yeah, so there's a grant that's available for preservation assistance for institutions such as libraries and museums, which I think we might take advantage of if the library and museum are interested. Deadline is January fifteenth and there is money to, um, help out with preserving collections of various books, journals, manuscripts, moving images, photographs, sound recording, architectural records, decorative and fine art objects, and I think the museum has all types of stuff that they qualify, um, so if anyone has, uh, contact that museum staff or, uh, on the board.
Bob.
Is that?
Bob.
Bob, oh, okay.
Hey, what happened?
Okay, great, um, and there is a, um, update on the rail trail, it is open, and with all the snow on the ground, which is melting, of course, they are not planning ever to plow it, uh, when it snows. They wanna keep it open for snow, uh, snow use, it's like, uh, cross country skiing, uh, snow shoeing, and even those back bike tires seem to like to go through the snow, it's not too much. Uh, so hi, hikers are welcome to use the trail, but need to have their own area where they're not interfering with the tracks. Uh, they have, uh, infrared counter on the trailhead, which reported in the last, in the first two weeks it was open, fifteen thousand people used the trail, so that's pretty impressive. Uh, all three trailhead parking areas are now open and will continue to be open. There is, uh, the census is coming up in the Supreme, they're going to send out postcards to all addresses in April. It's gonna be an all digital, online census, uh, small, short form, not a lot of information required, but for people who don't have computer access, they, uh, recommend that the town halls and libraries help out with, helping people get access to computers to do the census, very important that we participate. Uh, local governments are required by law to make announcements of the census, so, uh, that will be coming up. The county will send representatives and it will have people willing to help out as, have anything that's new. There's a Hudson River Estuary Program, I don't know if this applies to us, it is to, um, preserve the continuity of the water flow, attributes to the Hudson River, and that's specifically to preserve the habitat for the American eel and/or the river harry. Now, we're not that close to the Hudson, but we are one of the tributaries, so, uh, you know, we may be able to get some fat honey if there's any blockage to the water flow that, uh, that people know about that needs work, so that's all on the form here. Towne Shandrom, uh, they are, um, now putting in their first solar installation, which we're really happy about, and they have updated their town's comprehensive plan, so I guess we might be next. I think that's the highlights here. Okay, there's all the fine arts and, and the other grants for artistic projects as well. Anybody that wants to look at the grant proposals, that will be down in the bulletin board, okay?
Thank you. Okay, planning board, no, I'm giving my resignation as a, as a planning board member to the town board because of, um, my situation with my business, uh, the structure's changed, so that I had to spend more time with that and I also pastor a small country church that takes up a lot of time, so, um, I'm unable to continue, so.
And the what?
January.
Sorry to hear that.
So, anyone, I mean, you out there wanna be on the planning board, and there's also an opening on zoning boards.
You're gonna have to put it on the access channel with Delon.
Okay.
And advertise that there'll be an opening at the planning board.
It's Sunday, yeah.
No, that was for the regular, uh, member that was up, which was Cliff.
Yeah, that's, my term was up also.
Yeah, and he has, one of us is up, so. Now we need a new thing.
But Cliff was staying up.
We need a new replacement for John.
So we need to, I just asked, that we need to.
No, no, of course, his ad is already finished, nobody applied for, you know. Nobody applied for Cliff's position, nobody wanted.
Nobody wants to.
Somebody might want it, come on again, you know, so we just have to leave that, just leave that in on you.
We've had a lot of interesting things in the past, uh, few years, with, you know, whoever thought there'd be such a thing as clamping and, uh, short-term rentals as they are today.
short-term rentals as they are today. A lot of things that were never in our regulation books or even thought to be in, so it's been interesting.
Two years ago, they didn't know what that meant, baby, when they came here.
So being on the planning board is interesting if you're, if you're interested in it. If you know anybody that would be interested in it. We certainly do need some more people to get involved. I've been involved, whatever town I lived in, in one form of another. I was a councilman and a committee man and a planning board member. But I've always thought it's very important, but I think it's now time to step back and let other people step up to the plate and serve their town, so. Either that.
Is there any other business?
I was just gonna kind of give you an update on the SDR meeting. I didn't know that Sam is gonna be here tonight because the last meeting, that I saw, he was not here. But he's here, so, I mean, I'm sure he keeps you guys up to date where the committee is making progress. You know, we have a lot of issues to overcome. We're trying to use the zoning code book, where there's noise, lighting, and everything else that you would wanna regulate on a, on a short-term rental or Airbnb. Most of it's in the zoning code book, including what I think is also the licensing for short-term rentals, which would, you know, come under a special permit, because my opinion is that if everybody checked the zoning out prior to buying a piece of property and renting it out on a permanent basis, if they just looked at the zoning rules in the town and spoke to people, they would know that they would have to apply for a special permit. And the reason they apply for a special permit and to upgrade some sort of business or something that's doesn't conform to a residential property is to let the property owners around them know exactly what's going on and give them an opportunity to come before the planning board and discuss whether they agree, disagree, or, you know, what their concerns are. So I think some of the SDR committee wants to move very quickly and just say, let's just license it and be done with that, and, you know, make it very minimal and just make everybody legal. And one of, another one of my concerns is that we really don't know how many SDRs or Airbnbs are in Shandaken itself. You know, we had a number of one hundred and twenty-eight from the county that was, that was in two thousand eighteen.
It was way more than that.
From what I understand, it's between four and five hundred. So if we regulate something within our discussions of one hundred and twenty-eight or one hundred and fifty, and then we get, just use hypothetically, seven hundred, you know, that's seven hundred that are gonna come in, and you can't tell somebody they can't have a license if you start issuing these things blanketly to everybody. So I think there's gotta be some, some sort of system where the planning board is involved some way, the issuing, whatever is issued, or whether we go to the special permit for the area. I mean, I think that that has to be. I would hope that that would be part of it. I know Sam's been very, very, I mean, if it wasn't for Sam on the, on the board, I'd probably, I would've probably quit a long time ago. He seems like it's kind of a little loaded up with individuals that really think that, you know, the SDR community is great to the town. And I think it is good. It's beneficial to a lot of businesses and stimulating the economy. But on the other hand, it's taking good single-family homes and properties away from the people that live here that really can't afford inflated rates of what the Airbnb community is doing to the town. So I, I, you know, I'll come in periodically and give you an update. And I'm sure Sam's giving you updates. I heard him speak to you at, you know, a couple meetings ago. So, but we are making progress, and Howie was at the last meeting, and it was good. I mean, we are making progress, and hopefully we'll come up with some sort of solution that benefits everybody and protects the rights of the people that live in the R five, R three, R one and a half residential zones, because I think that's important, and it's very important to our community well-being and livelihoods.
Yes, and community.
Yeah. That's what I think. And I don't know, Sam might wanna add something to that.
The other thing I would add is that we really wanna get this to a point where the town can take some action. So we're gonna meet twice in January. We really wanna move this forward.
You know, if you go on the internet, you put Airbnb, Townes Shandaken, it'll all come up, and at the end it'll give you a total. The last time I saw, it was all from, from.
Yeah. You'd be surprised how many there are. I mean, they're minimizing it through, some people are minimizing it for our discussion, saying there's not that, that many, and, you know.
I know people that hold trade for them.
Well, they're banking on what the county has when they put out those letters for the two percent tax. So who's ever, you know, answered or replied to it and is paying them the two percent from last September, that's what was counted in that. I mean, I don't, I don't think Airbnb has given them any numbers. And another concern of mine along that line is the town knows that the short-term rentals basically are illegal. They know that they didn't apply, only the ones that didn't apply for a special permit. So if you have a building and it doesn't conform, and somebody's renting it out on a short-term rental basis, and somebody falls off, say, a second-floor porch with a faulty railing, and breaks their neck and is paralyzed for the rest of their life or even dies, that the liability, there's gonna be some sort of liability that town is gonna incur with lawsuits or whatever, because it's an issue that you know is ongoing, and you haven't regulated it, and you haven't done nothing to stop it. So you've gotta look at the legal part of what could happen.
Also, in that same stream of thought there, you have a Airbnb where we all know what happens is four people rented and twenty people show up. This deceptive can't, can't
Can't regulate.
Can't regulate, because there's too many people now using the deceptive.
It's like the under system.
Right, and it's gonna overflow, there were that problems, and I'm shocked that the DMC is
We're stumbling along, you know, sometimes we're running, sometimes we're skipping, and sometimes we're just stagnant, but we, we're moving.
Okay.
And there's progress that we're making on both, on both sides of it.
But I don't, I don't appreciate the thought that, you know, they're trying to get it done as quickly as possible.
No, 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 no.
That, that.
No, no, let me be very clear. We think that a sense of urgency is warranted, particularly from Hank's point, that the town should do something. But we are not gonna rush to judgment and make, for the sake of being fast. But we are, I think, adopting a proper sense of urgency. Because you have it as with volunteering.
Yes.
It's, you know, it's, it's real easy. You go a month, and now you gotta remember, what did we talk about four weeks ago? You know, we think more periodic meetings is gonna help us keep our eye on the ball.
Town's gotta address the building department, though, too, I mean, it's all of a sudden inspecting five hundred SDRs.
And they're gonna be old, non-conform individuals.
Right, in the original, in the original thought that we had, Alan and I, yeah, they're, they're bringing up here an application fee of two seventy-five. We had a fee of three seventy-five, but we felt that this renewal fee and the annual fee would, and the initial fee would support the employment of someone that would be resistant, and that person would be would be responsible for inspecting these buildings.
Yeah, and even if, if there's a percentage of the tax that Shandaken might benefit by, by these rentals. To make it conform to our present neighborhoods and communities and towns.
And how to make it advantageous for Townes Shandaken?
Yeah, and my, my thing is, everybody says that Airbnb, I like to use that term, and it seems like some of our committee members only wanna use the term short-term rental.
Right.
But Airbnb, it seems like, they think that because there's Airbnbs that they generated all of this traffic and tourism to, to our area, and that's not the case.
No.
Our area has generated its own tourism through the beautification that we've done, the quaint little towns, the hiking trails, the fishing, the hunting, the scenic, you know, byways. And we're one of the, probably the second-largest tourist town in the state of New York. So Airbnbs are just capitalizing on what we've done in this town to make it better.
I have a question, how long applies for Howie?
Watch out.
Are the regulations more stringent for rentals? Suppose I own my house now, suppose I rent it. Am I held to a higher standard? Is the house held to a higher standard because I'm renting?
Well, like you could come around and find something wrong with my house, maybe.
From the zoning point of view, you are changing your house, you have a single-family residence. And suddenly you are now renting rooms. It's a change of use, no longer just a single-family residence. But back to your question, no, you're not held to a higher standard if you're renting your house out presently.
But if, suppose my faucet's weak, and that's my problem, but if I rent, it's still your problem.
It's still your problem, you gotta take care of it.
There's, there's another issue that nobody's even looked at, or I don't know if they thought about it, but it's the American with Disabilities Act. There's a federal standards for that, and there's also in the state of New York, so I don't know. Yeah, and, and if, if, you're gonna have short-term rentals or Airbnbs, or whatever you wanna call it, you know, there's, they gotta be also available to people with disabilities, whether they be hearing, visual, or mobile. So there's another issue that we're not gonna show yet.
All right. I hear a motion to
I make a motion to the general.
My second.
Favor? Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Don, that's another issue too, is, you know, trying to find volunteers to do these jobs, because if all houses are gonna be rented on a daily basis, there's nobody with an you're not gonna have volunteers with the, you know, the zoning board committee, or the planning board committee, or even the fire department. You're all volunteers, so we've gotta look at the long term and not just be shortsighted and think of money.
It's complicated. So, Don, this is it this week?
Uh, no.
Workshops on Christmas.
That's right, this day.
Well, let me shake your hand, thank you very much.
I was so happy when you said, "I'm like..."